Oh, like everybody here didn't know you.
Hello.
You stopped and hugged everybody.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock.
Just at seven.
Okay, seven o'clock. I call being ordered. Real call.
Barlow, Bergeron.
Here.
Brem.
Here.
Deveroy.
Here.
McLean.
Here.
Rezegi.
Here.
Rocha. Stensel Barton.
Here.
Tassava.
Here. Entertaining motion to excuse Councilmember Barlow and Councilmember Rocha.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Support.
Okay, motion by Rezegi, supported by McLean, to excuse Councilmembers Barlow and Rocha. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Owe the same. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America's one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, everybody get a chance to go over the agenda. Entertaining motion to approve.
Twenty-eight.
Is there any corrections or additions to the agenda? First.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as written. Support.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Deveroy, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Owe the same. Item five, approval of minutes of the May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting. Any additions or corrections to that?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of May twenty-seven.
We'll support that.
Okay, motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Brem, to approve the minutes of the May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting. No discussion, real call.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Uh, we have no public hearing, public comment. Anybody at this time would like to get up? I'll give you three minutes, tell me who you are. Anybody? Okay, formal recognitions and presentations. Uh, we have Dave Hatfield here tonight. Do you have anything to tell us about, Dave?
Thank you very much. Uh, as usual, I'm here primarily to see if you have any questions for me. Uh, because for the most part, uh, what we're dealing with is a continuation of what I reported to you last time. Uh, of course, the most imminent, uh, event, uh, which we really, uh, as a county commission, have virtually nothing to do with, uh, is Rock the Country, uh, coming up this weekend, but certainly a couple of our departments, uh, do, and I'm glad to see that Patrick is, uh, here tonight, uh, to talk a little bit about what's going to be going on. Uh, most significantly, I am very pleased to be able to report that the groundbreaking for the Commission on Aging will be June twenty-fourth, so a couple of weeks, uh, away. The last hurdles, uh, have been cleared. That was really getting, uh, driveway cut issues taken care of so that we could get, uh, construction equipment on site, uh, you know, coming directly off of, uh, seventy-nine so that we don't have to, uh, tear up, uh, the parking lots and driveways that are, uh, there right now. Otherwise, uh, our, uh, jail committee, uh, had their organizational meeting last week, so they're up and moving forward, and, uh, we'll be reporting on that, uh, regularly as we have, uh, uh, information from them to, uh, to share. Other than that, uh, we've got, uh, five union contracts coming up this year. We're in the very early organizational stages of getting ready to deal with those, but, uh, those will have, uh, I'm guessing, material impact on our budgeting as we move, look forward to, uh, to next year. So, those are the primary things we're dealing with. Any, anybody have any questions or thoughts that they'd like to share?
Do they have a time on the twenty-fourth, Dave, for that?
Uh, it's, I believe it's three o'clock.
There gonna be a ceremony?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions of Dave?
So, I'm a little behind. Where is this going?
Oh, uh, it, it's co-locating with Thorn Apple Manor.
Okay.
Uh, so it, it will be, uh, a connected but still separate facility, uh, with its own entrance and things coming off of, uh, seventy-nine, but it will have a hallway connection to Harvest Point, and, uh, in, within the project, Harvest Point is also adding some additional space that, uh, they're hoping that, uh, they may be able to utilize for physical therapy or dialysis or some such service, uh, that, uh, would be a benefit to their, their residents. So.
Any other questions? Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we have Patrick Jansen here, uh, Berry County Emergency Management Coordinator. He's gonna give you the fine information about the Rock, the Rock Country.
Yeah, well, good afternoon. I managed, uh, got on the agenda so I could allow you guys to ask any questions, um, and answer anything that you, uh, may, uh, may have. So, I guess, uh, hopefully, everybody saw the press release that went out last week. It's been widely shared on social media. It was also in the, uh, local papers. I believe it was in the news. Uh, we, the goal was to just to get the information out there to those that may not be aware of what was coming. Uh, we're looking at upwards of fifty thousand people, um, over the course of this weekend, and they're already out there setting up. In case you, if you haven't driven by there, they've got, uh, the gates up, they've got security already in place, and they've got a lot of infrastructure already, uh, in the plans. So, uh, Chief Jordan and I were both out there today doing, uh, inspections, see how things are coming along and, uh, making sure that we've got everything in place. Uh, we've been planning, uh, working on this for pretty much the last six months. Uh, we've never experienced anything of this magnitude in Berry County, but they do these things all over the country, and we have a lot of, a lot of experience and resource, uh, working with us, um, on the planning of this. So, we have, uh, I feel like we're in a pretty good place at this point after six months of planning, and they've had numerous other events leading up to this one, so they've, uh, been able to work out a lot of the kinks on their end. Uh, we're not, uh, a test pilot by any means. They've actually, I think, done five or six of them in the last few months, so all over the country. Uh, we've been coordinating with, um, all of our, uh, community partners, and, uh, we've had a lot of meetings, I would say. Um, some of them probably, uh, some people are probably, like, sick of all the meetings, but, uh, we've, uh, we've been coordinating with our surrounding counties, our, um, surrounding emergency managers, our dispatch centers. We're, we're making sure that we're, uh, you know, keeping them, you know, in the communication. So, if something goes sideways in this county, we're not alone. We're, we have plenty of backup and resources all around us. They're all aware and they're all ready to support us if anything should go awry. So, um, just wanna make sure that, you know, there's no concerns there. Like, we're, we'll be okay with, you know, if things, um, things happen, we've got a lot of support. So, uh, Hastings Airport, we, about a week and a half ago or so, we did get confirmation that they intend on using the airport, so their, uh, Gino is working on coordination with their pilots and planning for that, and as well as the, uh, the Sheriff's Office, who will be doing, uh, some of the escorting services for the headliners. Uh, we anticipate traffic congestion, and that was the biggest reason why we wanted the press release out, and the biggest thing that we're asking of, of you guys for, as far as elected officials, is, is communicating with your constituents. It's gonna be short-lived. It's kind, it's similar to the Roubaix, a little bit bigger, obviously. They'll be in, they'll be out, and it'll be done before we know it, and really, we just want people to, uh, you know, we're just encouraging them to prepare and plan ahead of time. Uh, we, we can't, uh, we can't control. Everybody's, uh, you know, uh, driveways. We certainly can't pre, prevent, uh, people, you know, on the roads, on public roads. It's, uh, so we just want people to, you know, plan ahead and, uh, be ready for some traffic congestion. And, like I said, we don't know what that traffic congestion's going to look like yet. We've never done this before, and we might have a better idea after Friday. Um, you know, a lot of the plan is to get them off the roads and into, into the parking area as fast as possible, so we hope that, uh, we don't see or experience the backups in, into Middleville and Hastings, but it is, it is potential, and we should all just be anticipating that that could, uh, happen. So, uh, we did, uh, push out in, uh, some, in the press release, as well as our central dispatch, uh, has, uh, a, a text for updates. This is a community update, a text number. It's two-two-six-seven-eight-seven, and you will get, um, updates regarding traffic and, um, community, uh, you, uh, things that are going on. This is not for, necessarily for the event itself. This is for community residents to stay informed of what's going on. So, we anticipate to, that hope, or we hope that the people in those communities are using this text number so we can give them updates, and, uh, they can, they give, receive timely, uh, notice. And, uh, as I mentioned, we're working very closely with all of our community partners. Um, Hastings Fire is, is taking a very active role in this, and I know Chief Jordan, um, wants to, has a few things to say regarding that as far as their activities. So, I don't know if you want him to, uh, talk about that this time or wait for his turn, but I'm, I'm available for, uh, questions either way.
So, you wanna get up there?
Sure, sure.
I know you gotta report at the end, but, uh, you might as well.
The report is about two minutes. So, I don't know if everyone's aware, I thought it'd be a really good time. Um, Hastings Fire Department, we are the AHJ, uh, authority having jurisdiction over that area because that's the fire district that we cover. So, we have a really large role in this event. So, all, all fire permitting for all the food vendors, um, camping, fireworks, uh, we're involved in all that. Uh, so, so it's a, it's a fairly large role for us. We'll also be staffing that throughout the event. We'll have, we, we have a total of four shifts, uh, two shifts each day. We'll have three, three to four, uh, five people depending on the day out there. Uh, but I wanted to assure, assure everybody that we've made appropriate arrangements that will, it will not negatively impact the coverage of our citizens here in the city. So, that was really important to us. But we're also obligated to cover the, the, the county out there, the township out there that we cover. So, just wanted to make everyone, make sure everyone was aware of that.
Any questions of either one of them?
Is it more than just Hastings Fire Department that's involved in covering? I mean, are the?
Yeah, as far as personnel, mm, ninety percent is Fire Department, Hastings Fire Personnel. We did bring some personnel from Yankee Springs that volunteered to work the event, just to make sure that we keep the appropriate people available in the city.
And then Thorn Apple Fire is, uh, has a couple of ambulances on site that are admitted to this event, and they, they'll have all, all four of their ambulances in service that weekend, so they'll still be able to maintain service to their community and residents as well in addition to staffing, so.
And we've also arranged, we have automatic neutral aid for pretty much any call throughout the weekend, so we'll have additional help coming in immediately.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Um, more, uh, this is less about the event this weekend, uh, more about that emergency number that you gave us, Patrick. Is that expected to be used in the future for weather and other emergency arrests?
The, the text event? Text number? Yes. So, that was actually, uh, it's a new addition to the, uh, to the rave system that we currently use in this community, and, uh, that's something new that was, uh, purchased here, uh, for this event and for future events, yes.
Awesome. I like it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Is it, and some of this would be out of county, but is it possible to post alternate routes to, like, come into Hastings or to get around this thing?
Yes. Uh, I believe that is part of the plan is to route them, uh, for texting out is to give them alternative routing information if, if necessary. And I, I just wanna clarify the, the, uh, the addition to that texting capability, that was something that was, uh, spearheaded by Central Dispatch.
Do you feel like you guys are ready?
Ready or not, here we come.
We've, we have, like I said, we have done extensive planning, lots of meetings. I believe we are prepared for this event as, uh, as much as we can be without ever having, you know, bran, had one of these in events in our community. There's things that we just don't know or can't necessarily, um, prepare for always, but, uh, we certainly have utilized all of the resources, um, at our disposal to plan for it.
Okay, that wasn't my question. That was my older brother's question. He lives over there on Whitmore Road by, uh, the fairground.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, guys.
I got niece and nephew that live across the street, which are, I think they'll be staying home all weekend.
Why, like, just come stay with you? I wouldn't plan on going anywhere.
Okay, uh, item number nine, action by unanimous consent, none. Items of business, motion to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash sixteen to authorize issuance of limited tax general obligation bond series twenty-twenty-five. Wanna talk about that, Sarah?
Um, sure. So, you may recall, a few months ago, you, um, authorized the issue of a notice of intent that went out to the public that put everybody on notice that we intended to issue bonds for this project up to a maximum of eight and a half million dollars. We, uh, were estimating the project cost to be seven point three million, but it's a not-to-exceed amount, um, so you'll see that number in the resolution still. Uh, the total costs include, uh, the contractor cost, the bid of which you approved at the last meeting, um, the engineering costs. We've already paid design engineering, but we can be reimbursed through this bond. Uh, we still have to, uh, pay the construction engineering, which you also approved, uh, at a previous meeting, um, and then the closing costs that are associated with the bonding process. Um, I have included in your packet an updated, uh, timeline for the issuance of these bonds. We were initially planning to close in July. However, the contractor would like to start some, uh, minor work still this fall, but the bulk of the project will start in the spring. As such, we're delaying the closing of the bonds, um, until September. We don't need the money before then, um, and that helps make sure that we're spending it down in a timely manner so as not to incur, uh, costs. So, um, the resolution was put together by the city attorney in compliance with, uh, the, the notifications and specifications that were, uh, included by our municipal financial advisor.
Anybody have any questions, Sarah? I hear a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash sixteen.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash sixteen.
Support.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Brem, uh, to approve, adopt, adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash sixteen to authorize issuance of limited tax general obligation bond series twenty-twenty-five. Any other questions, comments? Real call.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Okay, item B, motion to accept the proposal from Keys Cleaning Service for a three-year agreement for custodial services at City Hall for two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars a week. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
I hear support?
I'll support it.
Okay, motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Brem, to accept the proposal from Keys Cleaning Service for a three-year agreement for custodial services at City Hall for two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars a week. Discussion.
Your Honor, we've been having Halifax do our cleaning for over twenty years. They're already printed, fingerprinted, vetted, and they've done, been doing us a great job for twenty years. Pass them off for a few dollars is not worth it.
Anybody else?
I would support that. I, I would support that. I, I worked in the schools when they started trying to just outsource everything, and there's, there's something to be said for knowing the personnel that are coming in, and, um, I, I think it's really important. They're local, and I, I agree with these guys.
Any other comments? Okay, we have.
Will throw my support for that motion.
Do I hear a motion?
Hold on, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Do we have to mo, vote that motion down first and then?
Well, if, 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 if there's a motion made and there's no support, he's gonna die for lack of support.
Story of my life, but I understand.
Okay, no support. Motion dies. Do I hear another motion?
Make a motion to accept Halifax Services bid.
I'll support.
Can I just make that motion contingent on, or, or however you want to do this, 'cause their full bid is not included in here. We only put in the bid tab for everybody. Um, so if you'd like to see the rest of the bid, we can circulate that, um, after the meeting at some point.
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. 'Cause I just don't wanna have to wait till the next meeting or anything like that 'cause that, that's quite a delay, so I can circulate that.
Yeah, what she said.
Okay, we had a motion by Rezegi, supported by, do you hear that? Okay, we had a motion by Rezegi, supported by McLean, uh, to approve Halifax's bid.
It's three-twenty-seventy-seven a week.
Three-twenty? Say that again?
Three hundred twenty dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Okay, we have a motion by Sten, uh, uh, Rezegi, supported by McLean, to approve Halifax's bid for three hundred twenty dollars and seventy-seven cents per week. That sound about right?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
So. Saving twenty-five bucks a week, what's the difference in the bids? Is there, are, do they do the identical same stuff?
Um, so it includes everything that was in the RFP. Um, there is a little bit of a, a difference in that we requested, uh, exterior window cleaning twice a year. With Keys' bid, it includes four times a year.
Yeah, I saw that.
That's the only thing that I noted that would be different.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion from Rezegi, supported by McLean, to approve Halifax's contract, uh, three-year contract for three-twenty, uh, seventy-seven. Uh, no further comments, questions, real call.
McLean.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
No.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Brem.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Okay, item eleven, salt barn process. We can have Rob get up and talk about it.
Uh, well, Rob's gonna talk a lot about it, but, so, um, we have been working on, um, the salt barn, as we discussed in our budgeting process, is one of the capital improvements that need to be made. Um, it needs to be, uh, started in a timely manner because I know this is a horrible thing to say, but before we know it, it is going to be time to get salt out of that salt barn. Um, so, in an effort to expedite this process, um, Rob Neil, our Street Superintendent, as well as Vester Davis, our Special Projects Director, have been working on, um, a bid packet as well as just getting specifications and looking at what's out there for, uh, salt barn options. Um, we believe that we have located a business that, uh, we wanna go with directly, um, and I'll let Rob kinda describe what those reasons are and what some of the alternatives are. But what we're looking for, uh, from you guys today is feedback, um, that this process is or is not acceptable to you, um, 'cause if it is, we'll continue down this path, uh, finalizing specs and picking out exactly what we want, uh, and need from this particular vendor. Um, if you wanna go down a different path, we'll have to, uh, prepare some documentation, um, in, in a different direction. So, Rob, I'll turn it over to you to kinda get that started.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Um, so, this is Clear Heights Construction. They're out of, uh, Granville, Michigan. Um, they build salt barns all over the state of Michigan. They're source well, uh, which is similar to my deal, and I know some of you have heard about it. Um, the salt barn that we're looking at to replace our current one, which the mayor, Mr. Mayor knows, that is at least thirty-five years old that I know of, um, probably closer to fifty-five. Um, it is in very bad, uh, need of replacement, um, almost irreparable. So, this company, uh, they've provided us with a design build packet already. Um, I didn't ask them, I just asked them for a quote, and Vester's went through the design build a little bit. Um, they've done, went over and above, it includes everything. Uh, I did check with the company, one, you know, I found two, two other companies out of state. One is in the, uh, Minnesota and one's Missouri. Um, both of them, they will give us a quote for the building, but we're responsible for all the excavation and concrete and everything else. So, under, what I'm thinking is the design build that this company had, that they gave us, they're gonna design, they have all the engineering done, uh, they have the soil testing and the compaction right in the design bid, the concrete testing and everything. So, I think, uh, looking at some of their buildings and talking to a couple of people, um, in East Crane Rapids, which they just had one done, um, they, this would be a very viable option. Um, but if you wish, then we can go out to an RFP or RFQ. But it's gonna delay the process. Even if we get started now, it's turnkey building by their assuming, they're guessing probably November, so we're still gonna be rocking the boat as far as timelines, but I think we'll be good, um, at what we're looking at. And obviously, if we move forward with this, I'll have more, uh, of a report prepared for the following meeting when needed. Any questions?
So, they give you an idea, and, uh, does this fit in, we'd budget, what, two-seventy-seven?
Um, I thought it was two-sixty-five or something around there, but we, we base that on this cost, yes.
So, that, that's where you come up with this, what we'd budget for?
Correct. Um, so that may not include all the specifics, but I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
From what, originally what we have in the budget is what they, um, is a little over what they sent us for a proposal, um, just so we could have something to put in the budget, 'cause originally we were a little bit lower until he sent us a proposal, and then it's kind of, well, Sarah, I think we need to up this a little bit.
Sweet the budget.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So, is this gonna be, uh, this won't be another wrong one, will it?
Not that particular type. It'll be more of a Kwanzaa style.
Similar, what county you got?
Uh, not quite. I have a folder here that we can pass around later. Um, it's gonna be an arch build, it'll be an arch building. Um, it'll have seven, seven-foot walls on the sides and, uh, eleven-foot, or nine-foot in the back. Um, everything's, you know, fourteen inches thick, um, and the opening goes from the current, our current opening is eleven-foot to get the semis to back in there, and, and the way this one's constructed, it's kinda off to an angle, so some have a very hard time backing in there. Uh, but we're gonna go from eleven-foot opening to a thirty-two-foot opening, so should be able to back in there.
They're gonna have, uh, cement sidewalls on it?
No. Well, yeah, up to seven foot, and then they build from there. And this does have, this building has, have, uh, all guarantees on it, but I'll get in, uh, in another report.
Do you have a picture that I can pass around?
Sure.
Do you have a picture that I can?
Remember your, uh, your comment?
I'm a little uned, educated on salt barns. You're saying there's somebody in Granville who builds them?
Yes.
And the only other ones that you know about are in Minnesota and Missouri?
Correct.
And we're hesitating, why?
No, that's what they're.
Well, what they're, what they're, what they're saying is, we, we budgeted this amount of money to do this project.
Right.
Uh, you know, so we can go ahead and approve, uh, getting started on it, uh, you know, up to you guys what you wanna do.
It seems like a very niche construction, so.
It is.
It's here.
Yeah.
I know twenty years ago when I retired, that salt barn we have now was pretty much shot. Well, the problem you have is there's so many holes in the roof, it's been patched so many times. The salt we buy and it's getting really expensive. It gets, uh... The salt we buy and it's getting really expensive, it gets contaminated by water, you know, coming through that roof.
Seems like the salt was preserved.
So is this gonna fit back there when you tear that old one out?
Throw a few bodies-
What's that?
Is that gonna fit back in the same place?
Yeah, it's pretty much gonna have the same footprint. It is gonna go back a little bit farther.
I know.
The new building is a forty-eight foot by sixty-foot, so it'll be a little bit bigger, but the capacity will grow by about thirty, about thirty-six percent from what we got right now.
Now, we build, we put two hundred and fifty tons of the budget for this thing?
Well, the capacity's eight hu, eight hu, eight to nine hundred ton.
Really?
Capacity.
Wow.
The oil price used to be about thirty-five dollars a ton, what is it now? A lot higher now. So what, what's your, what's your pleasure?
My pleasure would be to keep moving forward.
Do we need a vote, or?
Just consensus.
Um, I mean, ultimately, yeah, consensus is fine at this point because ultimately you'll vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
And we'll try to have everything together.
Okay.
This is still consistent with the purchasing policy because under that policy, if something is under a larger contract like my deal or Sourcewell, which this is under Sourcewell, then we can forego the, the RFP process. But we understand that you like to have RFPs as often as possible for a lot of things, so we wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with this approach before we continued moving forward. So I appreciate that feedback.
Keep it as local as possible.
Yeah, I'm comfortable.
I'm comfortable.
Me too. So we want to just do a consensus, or you want us to make a motion?
Uh, it's up to you. I think a consensus is adequate, but if you prefer to make a motion, then that's fine.
What do you want to do?
Entertain a motion to approve the project.
I'll make a motion to approve the project.
Motion by Rezegi.
Support.
Supported by Deveroy, to go ahead with the salt barn project. And it's in the budget, so nothing's gonna happen till after July first anyway.
Well, nothing we have to pay for, but there's, there's still work to do that we can start in advance to prepare for that.
Right.
There's a lot of, lot of salt. I've been working with the county too, so we have a place to store our salt. Now, we're going a little farther, there'll be a little more in-depth conversation with them, so we can get that out of there.
Okay, any, we have a motion by Rezegi, supported by Deveroy, any further comments? Roll call.
Brim.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Deveroy.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Thanks, Rob. I'll fix your garage at home. I'll fix your garage at home. Put some salt in there. City Manager Report.
Um, so a few things for you this evening. First of all, we have put out the advertisement for the new full-time firefighter position. This is an additional, additional, additional position that was approved in the upcoming budget. So that ad is out there and we'd encourage anybody who's interested to apply. So if you know somebody who may be, please share that opportunity with them. Also, I wanted to let you know that you will soon be receiving an, a formal invitation from the developer for the groundbreaking ceremony for Hastings River Walk Lots. If you'd like to save the date, that's July first. I believe it will start at ten. I think they're still finalizing the time, but I think that's most likely to be the time, if you want to jot that down. And also, one, one last friendly reminder that at our next council meeting, please come early at six-thirty for the all-council photo that will take place here in this room. So we'll have a nice new photo to replace the, the old one there. And I think that's all I have for you this evening, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions, Sarah? Do you believe the city of Hastings is ready for Saturday, or Friday and Saturday?
Uh, yeah, we were born ready.
We're born ready?
We were born ready.
There you go.
Write that, write that down. Write that down. Okay, also in your City Manager Report, you have Chief Jordan's monthly report. Anybody have any questions? Chief Jordan, anything to add, chief?
I did add the extra slide on the end to my normal report, just showing the additional increase in calls we're having this year compared to last year. We're hoping, hoping this month gives us a break since we have some other things going on this weekend.
Maybe there's a few things.
I've been kind of impressed the last couple training sessions you have, how many, and I, there's people from out of the area I see at your training, so keep that up, yeah.
So we're, so the last, the last one we did was a county class, but we, we are required to do mutual aid training at least twice a year. So we try and bring other departments in and then we can count that as mutual aid training for our ISO rating.
So any, any questions for the chief? Thank you. Library Director Edelman's monthly report, he's not able to be with us tonight. His report's in your packet, if you have any questions, we can get him to him. Water Utility Superintendent Robbins' monthly report, it's in your packet. Anybody has any questions? I think Rob could probably answer some of the questions, but.
I know this sounds small. I've had three people ask me why there's so much water being flushed down the drains after watering lawns, like the city, this lawn out here, the sprinklers are on and it's flowing into the street and into the, into the drain. Is that monitored, is that checked? I have no idea, but I was asked that question.
No, anything that goes out onto the street like that is just considered stormwater.
Are we overwatering anything? Is it on timers?
Everything's on timers for our sprinkler systems here.
And somebody knows what the timer's supposed to be set at?
Yeah.
I can say that somebody has checked this.
They get set every spring.
Okay.
And adjusted.
I wouldn't think you'd have much water running gutters, or a head bad or something out there maybe?
There could be. I mean, we'd have to check the time and then come in and check it, but they do run, some will run for anywhere between thirteen and fifteen minutes, depending on the size of the heads, the gallons per minute and all that.
I'll nod politely that somebody does take care of that.
Yes.
Okay. I will say somebody has taken care of that or looked into it.
Any other questions? Reports and Communications, YMC update for the city of Hastings, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Item B, Hastings Public Library Board Trustees draft minutes of June second, twenty twenty-five. Entertain a motion to accept both those items, place them on file.
I'll make that motion.
Support. Most by Brim, supported by Rezegi, to accept items A and B and place them on file. Roll call. Just for the heck of it.
Uh, Deveroy.
Yes.
Bergeron.
Yes.
Brim.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Throw a wrench into that every once in a while. Public comment, I have many mistakes tonight, so I thought I'd do that. Public comment, anybody want to get up and say anything? Tell us who you are. Give you three minutes.
Hi, my name is Nancy Halifax, and I have a cold, and I'd like to tell the whole council thank you for considering my bid for the janitorial service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Hatfield, nine thirty-six West Walnut. This is somewhat self-serving since I got voluntold to be involved in this activity, but I, I think, I hope you are all as proud of how downtown looks as what I am. And, yeah, I want to thank all of you, I want to thank the DDA, I want to thank the staff. Lot of hands went into making it what it is, but I think that, yeah, for anybody that questioned the wisdom of doing the downtown streetscape, if they simply drive through downtown right now and take a second, look around, we can be very, very proud of how that looks. So I thank all of you and hope that perhaps you'll extend that on to everybody else that was involved through the DDA and a couple of the volunteer committees as well as the staff.
Thank you. Thank you to him. Mayor Council Comment, Jerry, any comments?
I have none.
Jordan?
Yes, sir.
Jackie?
No, sir.
Ann?
Yes. Since, since David couldn't be here tonight, they had a really nice dedication of the story block for Jane Arnold, and it was attended by quite a number of people. And it was, it's gonna be a really special thing, nice addition.
Nice.
John, Rezegi?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mike?
Nothing.
Okay, I just want to remind everybody to stay out of the northwest part of the county. I think it's gonna be a great event, I might slip out of the airport maybe Thursday night, is that when they're flying in, or Wednesday night? If there's anything you want anybody to know.
It would be Friday, Saturday evenings.
Okay, okay. Anyhow, like I said earlier, I've got a niece and nephew that live across the street in that subdivision, and I think he's already left and she's gonna sit on the deck and listen. You know, it's, I, I don't think we need to be afraid of having events like this. I think we have the personnel in this county that can handle, you know, whether it's the Sheriff's Department, the city, the Fire Department, I think we have more than enough personnel. I think Patrick's doing a great job, so I really appreciate you coming tonight and giving us information on this. So if there's nothing else coming for council, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by McLean.
I will support that.
Supported by Stensel Barton, to adjourn. All favors, aye? Aye. Full same, to adjourn. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.